Right, I apologize. We were 30 seconds late. It is now 45, 45 and a half minutes past. We will continue with the agenda, moving on to detailed site plan docket 19-03, which is the Melford Mansions multi-family residential project at Melford Town Center. I would like to begin, turn it over to Mr. Minert for staff report, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Byrd and members of the planning board. I'm Joe Minert, the Planning Director for Bowie. This case before you is a detailed site plan for a portion of the Melford property, Melford Town Center. This property is located off the east side of Currie Drive and the north and south sides of Lake Melford Avenue Extended, which is a future road that will be built to the east of Currie Drive. The request is for approval of a multi-family project involving 435 dwelling units in nine multi-family residential buildings. The site is approximately 54 acres in size and the property is zoned MXT. This request tonight is a hearing before the BAPB. It's an advisory item. The BAPB will make a recommendation to the city council, who will hear this case on July 1st. Staff did advertise tonight's hearing with the mailing of 90 notices out to the neighborhood and surrounding area on May 14th. We also posted the property for tonight's hearing on May 29th with five public hearing signs. This request is a detailed site plan and I wanted to point out, as we discussed in the staff report on page three, that under the current arrangement that the city has through the annexation agreement of the property and the covenants that go with that, that the city has the ability to approve or deny any detailed site plan on these parcels prior to submission to the county. So there has not been a county plan filed yet and they're not able to do that until they have first achieved approval from the city. The covenants also state that the city's approval of a detailed site plan application shall not be unreasonably withheld. So that's the language which is in the current covenants. That's why they're here today, ahead of going to the county. And so really, you're the first hearing on this detailed site plan that's been put out into the public. The applicant did sponsor a stakeholders meeting in conjunction with the city on May 28th. We provided a brief summary of that. There were nine residents who attended the meeting. There were several comments made and questions asked, multiple questions asked about traffic and how the traffic would be handled with this development. But again, we're at a detailed site plan stage and really, traffic is an issue that's primarily addressed during the preliminary plan of subdivision, which has already been granted for this site. We do look at circulation, parking, and those types of things relative to how this detailed site plan works. In terms of the criteria for approval of a detailed site plan, the county zoning ordinance sets forth the requirement, and there's really only one thing that has to be found, and that is that the planning board may approve a detailed site plan if it finds that the plan represents a reasonable alternative for satisfying the site design guidelines without requiring unreasonable costs and without detracting substantially from the utility of the proposed development for its intended use. The planning board is typically looking at detailed site plans, looking at the site design guidelines of the zoning ordinance and any other pertinent guidelines which should be established for the project. And in this case, the conceptual site plan that preceded this plan set forth design guidelines, and the board is familiar with those design guidelines as part of that conceptual site plan. In addition to that, the city has its own development review guidelines which also come into play. We provided a very detailed staff report, which goes through the multiple pages of the submission that was made. We've made comments and recommendations that are summarized, beginning on page 16 of the staff report. These recommendations and conditions are typical site plan-related conditions that pertain to compliance with the regulations that affect the plan under review and to try to address and improve the building and site aesthetics and conform with the city's own guidelines. And so we feel that the plan is approvable with the eight conditions that you see on pages 16 through 18. I'm not going to go through them specifically. The applicant can state whether they agree or disagree with those conditions, but they're technical in nature. We don't believe any of them are really burdensome, really resulting in cleaning up of the plan before it gets submitted to the county. So staff is recommending approval with the eight conditions, and I would like to just briefly run through a number of slides that we have here on projector, just to orient the board to the property, and then I will turn the presentation over to the applicant's This is an overview picture of the Melford project, and the site that we're talking about is located sort of in the center of that picture, in the bluish areas of the buildings that are footprints that are shown there, just to the upper center part of the picture. This is more of a technical drawing from the site plan phases, and it shows the area right in the center of that plan where the proposed buildings are located. That's nine multi-family buildings. This is a copy of the site plan that shows the layout of those buildings. And then at the southern portion of the site, you do have one building on the south side of that Lake Melford Avenue, which is the proposed street that I mentioned. This is just a technical drawing that shows the plaza area adjacent to Currie Drive. Currie Drive is the road on the left-hand side, and it's noteworthy that this property will have some public space that is located on the east side of Currie Drive, which would be exactly opposite of the public open space across on the west side of Currie Drive, which was associated with the Aspen apartment building. So there's a large public presence here, which is at the major intersection of Currie Drive and Lake Melford Avenue. We do have the landscaping plans as well that show the landscape treatment of those The building architecture, the buildings are fairly large, multi-family buildings. They will have elevators and parking underneath. I can allow the applicant to elaborate on that when they present, but this just shows one of the typical multi-family buildings. You can see it's four to five stories in height. Here are a couple of renderings that show the character of these buildings, high-quality building materials, roof pitches that are residential in nature. This is a drawing that shows the proposed clubhouse, which would be located in the center of the project, and it'll be a hub of community activity within the project. And so there's a lot of articulation within the building and the parking areas around it. There's also a swimming pool and complex associated with that clubhouse. And then finally, there's design features, site design signage, which would identify the project as the Melford Mansions, which would be the project name. And so I'll just refer back to the site plan drawing, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Minert, thank you very much. This time, please applicant approach. State your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Robert Antonetti of the law firm Shipley &amp; Horn, 1101 Mercantile Lane, Suite 240 in Largo, Maryland, 20774. Pleased to be here tonight on behalf of the applicant, St. John Properties. I'd be remiss if I didn't introduce our team, as always. We have Mr. Andrew Roud, Regional Partner with St. John Properties. We have Mr. Neil Greenberg with Somerset Construction, a partner on the project. We have Ms. Jen Hearn to my left, Development Coordinator of St. John Properties, and Mr. Ken Finley, also with St. John Properties as well. On the architect's side, the architects are ACI. We have Fike Tugburgs here, Devram Exi and Chong Cho are here as well from ACI. We have from the civil engineer side, landscape architects, we have Mr. Chris Rizzi and Mr. Joe DiMarco here as well. And I apologize if I missed anybody, but I think that covers our team. We're pleased to be here tonight on behalf of the applicant to represent this project. This is the fifth detailed site plan for the Melford Town Center. We've been back before you multiple times. This is an extension of the residential component that was approved as part of the covenants. As Mr. Minert stated and referenced from the staff report, the covenants did allow for a mix of uses. It did authorize that the city have approval of detailed site plans as we move through the process, and this, again, is the fifth detailed site plan before you. The detailed site plan also cannot be unreasonably withheld, and I mention that because we've really gone through quite a long litany of approvals leading up to this case, not just the detailed site plans, but the cases that came before it. We have the conceptual site plan that was approved, which approved up to 2,500 residential units, several hundred thousand square feet of commercial uses in various forms and fashions. We had a preliminary plan of subdivision approved in 2017, which laid out the lotting pattern and the public facilities analysis for the uses going forward. I will say, at the time of preliminary plan, we had proposed down from 2,500 units, 1,793 units. And that is a reduction, and that is typical. When you move forward through an engineering exercise and you get more detail as to what the land can actually yield in terms of its forms, market input, other factors, you actually come up with an actual true number within the overall maximums that were set in the earlier conceptual phases. So these detailed site plans that you've heard, and the one that's presented tonight and the one that follows it, are really carrying forth kind of the final iterations of that concept that was approved, beginning back at the covenants and through those earlier entitlements that I referenced. I will mention in terms of the slideshow briefly, I do want to thank Mr. Minert. I'd be remiss if I didn't do that. The staff has done a wonderful job, and as they have in all the Melford Town Center applications that have come before us. We have met with staff, we have gone over details, they've made recommendations, we've altered our plans, and tonight, the presentation tonight, is really a byproduct of that cooperative nature and that collaborative sense between your planning staff and the applicant. So I'm very pleased to show the product that we have here today. We think it is representative of the vision of the city and look forward to carrying it forward. I will show you briefly, as I mentioned, the next slide is the, that is the conceptual site plan, which really is the initial entitlement under the MXT zone, which this planning board endorsed, the city council endorsed, and ultimately, the county council endorsed it, sitting as the district council. As you see right here, if you can go to the next slide, that's the preliminary plan of subdivision. This was an illustrative site plan. Again, the preliminary plan was approved in 2017. What you'll see in the upper right corner is the mansion area, as well as the next application, which is infrastructure-only for the future Berkeley building. You'll see incredible similarities, and that's true to form. When the conceptual site plan was approved, it also was approved with design guidelines, which you've seen me hold up. This is kind of my bible for the Melford Town Center. So it's a little worn, because we've gone through multiple applications, but the design guidelines really are well thought out and conceived as the different types of product and where they should be located within the project. And that has been carried forth through the conceptual site plan, and this illustrative site plan on the preliminary plan is, again, is being carried forward tonight in the detailed site plan. If we go to the next slide, please. Now here, I'm getting a little ahead of myself. This is the infrastructure slide for the Berkeley building, which is the farthest to the east. It is for infrastructure only. It's rough grading, utilities, some certain road placements. We do not have a building for this, and I know that's the following plan, so I'll get off that subject matter quickly, but I'll jump back to this when I present on the next DSP. If we can go to the next slide, please. This is a site plan, a view of what we're proposing tonight, and what's in the dark and gray roofs are the multi-family buildings, the kind of the smaller multi-family buildings, elevator-served, a combination of surface parking and garage parking that we want to bring forth tonight. It is also the completion of the plaza that was conceived as part of the Aspen building, which you had reviewed earlier in an earlier detailed site plan. So it's the other side of that plaza, and Mr. Tugburg will go through that and the thinking behind that and how that design language is carried forth through this detailed site plan provision. So with that, I think I'd like to call up Mr. Tugburg to go through the design and the aspects of this, and then we'll come back and answer any questions that you might have. So thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Good evening. My name is Fike Tugburg, and I'm an architect and a planner with Architects Collaborative out of Bethesda, Maryland. It's great to be here, presenting you this project, at least the architecture and planning aspects of it. I personally enjoyed very much working on this property and the buildings themselves. We're used to doing a lot of larger buildings, which present a number of challenges. I think this villa concept, which basically has 40 units in it, for me, I found it incredibly flexible to work with on a site and also very user-friendly. As you know, there are lots of 3, 400, 500-unit buildings in our Washington metropolitan area. My philosophy here was to really create a community and buildings that would remain relevant going into the future. And the number of, sort of countless decisions we made in design and planning of this project is that the philosophy behind it was, I didn't want to create a series of cul-de-sacs and narrow streets with parking mostly, but what I wanted to do was give it a sense of community and basically work with courtyards, so that from any point or from any building, you're not looking at anything so close or confronted with a massive building. I will show you that we have a color palette and variety of materials that we've used. My, again, goal was to, no matter which building you're in, you're not going to see yourself in the other building or the copy of it, and that every view, as much as possible, is pleasant. Another goal was to, of course, meet the planning and landscape guidelines, street frontage guidelines, parking guidelines, all of which we met or exceeded. There are the two sides of the plaza. The left side was approved with the Aspen. The right side is part of this project, which was also in general approved prior to this project, but I will talk to you about it later in my presentation. I'm going to give you some statistics. I promise I'll do my best not to be boring and try to expedite the presentation right after that, and hope you like it and enjoy it. We have nine residential buildings, and we have one clubhouse. So there are 10 buildings altogether. The clubhouse is centrally located in the community, and we planned it in such a way that as you come down Lake Melford Avenue, the main entrance to the project is immediately to your left, and the clubhouse, you'll see later, tower, as well as the entrances, straight on access with that road. We provided some guest parking in front and potential resident parking to make life easier and obviously make the leasing go also in an expeditious way. And obviously, the amenities are really central to pretty much everybody in the community. The swimming pool placement is based on the sun orientation. North is up in this instance on the page, so we moved the swimming pool farther away from the bathhouse, so that most of the sun deck will remain sunny, and there are also four cabanas provided in there. In terms of the statistics, we have 435 units and we have 741 total parking spaces. The unit breakdown is, we have 43% one-bedroom units, 39% two-bedroom units, 57% two-bedroom and three-bedroom and two-bedroom and then units. The parking spaces, we have a very nice varied parking program. We offer private garages. These buildings, as you will see farther in the presentation, they are four, five-story buildings. All of them at the first floor have private parking spaces, and then above that, there are four stories of units in a lobby and elevator condition. So they are fully accessible and they offer a certain level of comfort and luxury to the users. Aside from the private garages, we have structured parking under other buildings, such as buildings A, B, four, and five. And then there are 380 surface parking spaces, and to offer further variety, we also have, Jennifer, if you would show the carport over there, we have about 24 spaces under the carport, which will be lit and protected. And our guest parking procedure is that if you drive up here as a guest, you will go to the clubhouse, you will get a parking pass, and then you will be able to park in any one of the spaces. In essence, it's a secured community. You can't just drive up and park anywhere. The owner would like to be able to have control over it. We have electrical vehicle charging stations in all of the buildings, and although we provide, you know, one or two per building going in, we're running conduits, so that we're all aware of the changing electrical vehicle market. As the need arises, we have the capacity to add more. I think that covers the parking. Can I go to the next slide, please? Okay. The pictures on the left represent our points of inspiration. The top three pictures are from Melford Mansion, which is right up on the hill. I forgot to mention to you that we maintain this visual access going all the way through our side of the plaza and into the clubhouse and our community. Because the mansion is raised like 30 feet, we have a good visibility from many places, not every place, but from many places, which is our point of reference for this project. And also, the Bel Air Mansion in Bowie. And of course, we have the Aspen Project right across the street, which has not been built yet, but it has been approved. And we don't want to copy any of this verbatim. As I mentioned, these are points of inspiration, but I specifically looked at more of the historical buildings. All of these buildings have a certain dignity in their simplicity. They are not over-articulated. They have punched windows. They have brick as their primary material. Some have slate and metal roofing, large brick elements, bay windows, and some decoration, front porch with modest-sized columns. So on the right side of this, those are the concepts that we're inspired by. We've added dormers in order to be able to articulate and make a historical references. We have different entrance features, but none of them are overly articulated. We picked on, in some instances, a wall, sort of a punched-window entrance vocabulary, and in some instances, we have the columnar vocabulary, sort of hinting at an antebellum type of structure. And those, we planned it specially. The balconies are actually continuous within one unit. It was important to me that we did not present sort of dividers in between to imply that they were all partial balconies. And on the lower slides are some of the more intricate elements. Without going overboard in the ornamentation, we're using brackets, bay windows, a variety of railing, and also brick base and rustication at the base. My philosophy in planning these buildings, very similar to the historical references, is that I was hoping to create a classicist, tripartite sort of a concept, which consists of base, middle, and top. So in every building, we provided a brick base to give it more of a permanence and more interest at the pedestrian level. Then we lightened up the materials as we went up. We're using high-quality siding, again, trim, lots of windows, and then the top portion is delineated with that bald cornice that is not really sticking out. Again, in the same line of thinking, it's modest, yet it makes the point. And then we have sloping roofs and dormers. We also made use of metal roofs in selected areas to keep our references. Next slide, please, Jennifer. So this is sort of top to bottom, our material board. Brick is real brick. We've used sort of outlining mortar colors. Above the brick, there is cast stone highlights, which we're capping, which is a good architectural practice, as well as a good aesthetic practice. Then we have, these are actual siding colors that we've used in these buildings. As you can see, we use a wide variety, so that these buildings do not repeat themselves. And then you can see the variety of metal roofs and the fiberglass architectural shingles we're using. So in collection, these materials allow us to really come up with unique-looking buildings in each instance. Next slide, please. Instead of presentation elevations, I elected to present perspectives to you. This is building number one. I'm going to go through building one through seven, and then buildings A and B, just so you can see these buildings in three dimensions. The sort of the articulation that, I wanted to put the articulation where it counts. I have a series of bumps in bay windows on the side elevations, the front entrances clearly delineated, and then we have, again, I don't want to destroy the roof of this building and go away from that solidity and that mansion look, so I have one dormer in this instance, and again, it's like a series of two-foot bumps. Next one, please. You can see this one uses different colors, but again, the brick base is rusticated to give it some scale, and again, sort of a permanent, sense of permanence and a reference to a historical past. The body of the building is treated in a different color siding. The entrance piece is highlighted without being overbearing, and then you see the top piece is a lighter siding separated with that cornice band. The next one, please. Same kind of an idea, different colors, slightly different articulation. Next one, please. Same things. These slides really speak for themselves. So building five. And again, we used a mix of dark and light colors. We enjoyed working with some of the darker colors more. For some reason, they offered us really more punched-out, you know, more sort of bolder structures, and, you know, that was part of the enjoyment. It really allowed us to express ourselves with a number of different materials and colors, which we don't always get the opportunity. So this is building number seven, and the next two buildings, would you go to the next slide, please? Buildings A and B, these front Lake Mansion Avenue, and they are part of that requirement to provide sort of a continuity of facades, and so we meet the 75%. You can see, this is the actual streetscape. We have planting strip sidewalk, another planting strip, so the building is properly set back from the street. Street parking. Next one, please. This is the other side, so building, you can go to building B. So this is what's facing on the other side. If you look at the key plan at the right bottom corner, same kind of articulation, same kind of tripartite section. Next one, please. So this is our sort of pride and joy, our community center. The challenge here was to create some spaces here that we would all love to have in our apartments or in our homes, but not necessarily can afford. So we have very generous fitness room, a really wonderful party room with interior bar, and then we also have an outdoor bar counter type of space. And we wanted to incorporate a lot of glazing into this building. We've used metal roofs. The tower element here sort of is a demarcation for our entrance, which is just sort of behind the front porch. And you can see this logo. We also have a nighttime perspective we didn't include in this presentation. The idea here is that the tower would become a sort of a landmark within the community and sort of a location marker gives you orientation, no matter where you are within this community. Also, the roof is sort of stylized to follow the same M shape, so we're playing a little bit between our signage and the architecture of this to relate. We used a brick base, louder glazing, and then standing sea metal roof, both in the clubhouse and the adjacent bathhouse. Next one, please. You can see our really extensive amenities here. We have an outdoor garden with, you know, grilling, barbecue, sitting, party opportunities. We have that sort of a wall that has been undercut, which is a separation between the pool activity and the rest of the outdoor space. Obviously, the pool area has to be fenced, so we have a bar on both sides of that where people can sit. And then right in the front, you have those four cabanas for those who want have those four cabanas for those who want to enjoy the cabanas. Next one, please. So, here is the plaza. The left side has been designed, I didn't design these, but I appreciate them and I understand the philosophy behind them, and we used it and played with it accordingly. The left side plaza is mostly hardscaped, kind of a civic plaza where some crowded, more crowded activities can take place, or where people can enjoy sitting in the sun, et cetera. Whereas, the side, the plaza on our side, which I like quite a bit, is sort of a more green, a pastoral look with a modest walking path that sort of completes the circle. I think this is very nicely planned. I really like the play between the sort of the diagonal cut and the two halves of the plaza. They sort of complete each other in many ways. And then, there is a gazebo incorporated right at the sort of radial axis, leading us into the Melford Mansions community. And the same thing goes from the community going out. We have sidewalks connecting us to the gazebo, and then the view that I mentioned, if you draw a diagonal line, it goes all the way to the Melford Mansion itself. Next one, please. So, this is my last slide, and I wanted you to get a feel for a realistic view of what this community will look like. We're quite proud of what we accomplished here. I hope you all like it. You can see the plaza in the forefront and how it connects with the more hardscape plaza. We paid particular attention to the frontages of these buildings, Frontin Curry Drive and Lake Melford Avenue. With that, I'm ending my presentation. I can answer whatever questions you may have, planning-wise or architectural. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again for your consideration tonight. I would like to state that the applicant is in support of the recommendations of the staff, and they recommended conditions. With the exception of one slight change dealing with condition eight, which is found on page 18 of your staff report, and it's a very minor change. We, this condition asks, at the time of stormwater management concept plan, to provide a detail of the landscaping materials to be used in the bioretention facilities, which are environmental site design facilities for stormwater management purposes. And I've just, we typically don't do that at concept plan. We do it at final technical stormwater management plan, which is the next iteration. That's where you specify your planting. So, I would just simply request, and I'm not sure if staff would have an issue with it, that instead of stormwater management concept plan, it be revised to final technical stormwater management plan, because that's when that level of detail is provided. I do hope that Mr. Tugberg's presentation, you know, is something that you like. These buildings are very well thought out. They are sympathetic to what's around it and some of the features of the Melford House and the Bel Air Mansion. I will say that the community building, and I've done multiple projects, you've seen multiple projects in your time on the board, it's a pretty special community building in the heart of all these buildings here. It's about 12,000 square feet, so it's not wanting in size, so it should be a very awesome central focus of these multiple buildings, which are differentiated just enough, as Mr. Tugberg pointed out, to show, you know, a certain level of individualism, although, but also part of a grand scheme for the Melford Mansions overall. So, with that, we greatly appreciate your attention, and if you have any questions of myself or our team, we'd be more than happy to attempt to answer them.
Well, thank you very much to yourself and to the rest of the team for your presentation. Very well thought out and put together.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Scults?
Yeah, very, very nice. Very, very nice. And Counselor, I know we've gone through this over and over, and we're to this point. Like any multifamily project, my biggest concern besides circulation is the parking itself. And I just basically am gonna, you know, ask some of the questions on parking, because obviously, before you do the detailed site plan, for final, those will all be hashed out. But looking at the circulation and access, Part C, on page eight. Sir, did you say there was eight, 380 surface spots? I just want to know, I did basically want to know how many surface spaces as opposed to the garage spaces there are, first of all?
Garage spaces are in two parts, the private garages under the buildings, and then the structured parking under some of the other buildings. The private spaces are 133, and there are 248 additional structured spaces, so it's approximately 381
Okay.
structured spaces, one way or another, you know, within a building. And then there are 380 surface parking spaces.
Okay, so, yeah, I was coming up with 341.
And 24 of those are under a carport.
Right, the 29, yeah. The other thing is, you mentioned the electrical, obviously. The electric cars, every time I turn on the TV now, one of the big makers are coming out with their version. Have you determined how many electrical charging stations are you gonna have it like per building? And I would assume those are probably, those would be underground? I don't know.
So, there'd be two per building, provided in the interior, and there would actually be opportunity for expansion of that as the need arises. So, the building would basically , I guess, the conduit or the channels for that electrical wiring and additional assistance would be added in the future.
Okay, so that'll, the wiring will all be put in prior to?
Yes, it'll be, it'll be prepared in anticipation for more of that to come.
Okay, and I guess the second thing, this is really a beautiful product. It really is. I mean, I applaud you guys. It's beautiful. With the parking, what gets me is that, you know, of course, you know, 1.5 spaces per unit, you know what I mean? Give me a break as far as the .5 stuff. But will the parking spaces be assigned to the people that are in the units? What I'm afraid of is that you always have, not so much the people that are in the units themselves, but, you know, somebody has a party, and before you know it, you got 40 or 50 people that show up that nobody was expecting, and they start parking in people's spaces and creates issues.
Right. So, the plan right now is that they will not be assigned. What will happen is it'll be controlled access into the surface lot and into the structured portions. There's opportunities for visitors, and what you would do is you would be either buzzed in or have a code to get into the armed areas.
It's like a gated?
Correct.
Oh, great, okay.
And then, if you have visitors, you can, you know, obtain passes, but those visitors would need a pass to display and be able to park in the surface area. And the planning too, also, you know, the Melford Town Center is a mixed-use project overall. There should be, you know, opportunities for on-street parking and, you know, other areas and walkability from other, from other portions of the site. So, it all doesn't have to happen in terms of visitors right on the mansion property.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just looking at the facility, the 12,000-square-foot facility looks beautiful, and I'm just thinking, okay, how many people, how many spots are there that are, you know, people are gonna be there? And I guess, the other one is, as far as the parking for disabled folks, I applaud you for coming up with more than what the code requires, but are you, are you basically, I noticed like on a few of the things that you've kind of gone like two per building with the assumption, is that pretty much the same as far as the handicap, or the disabled parking, or are you gonna have like one building that is specially dedicated towards folks with disabilities?
So, for the last question, there isn't one building dedicated for folks with disabilities.
Good, okay.
The hope is that all the buildings are accessible to code requirements, you know, that there's an integration of different occupants, you know, whether it's age-restricted, whether it's, you know, disabled, your typical market rent rate folks coming in so that they can all live in one environment safely. As to the allocation of where the handicap spaces are, I believe there was more or less an even distribution throughout the buildings. But, and given that it's a controlled situation, if there was an absolute circumstance that could, that would arise for, you know, a need beyond what we're provided, I imagine that the ownership would have flexibility to make accommodations as needed if that situation couldn't be resolved through the ordinary allocation. I've been reminded multiple times by Mr. Greenberg in particular, that, you know, the ownership is in this for the long run. They're gonna, they're gonna own this, maintain this. They're very proud of it, and they want to make sure that this is a, you know, a shining example of, you know, of quality housing experience, because, you know, we need to, we need to have that in order to have, you know, to maintain the 435, you know, tenancy and maximum occupancy. So, you know, we're gonna, you know, go beyond to make sure that we meet the needs of all our residents.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is an attractive type of product, given the area that we have. I mean, back right up the road and just, you know, just our location alone is, you know, I think you're gonna have a very good product here. Finally, obviously, the circulation, what always concerns me are two things. The emergency responses. Obviously, I'm, you know, you'd have to go through the code and make sure of that. But the other one, believe it or not, is snow removal. Do you have like areas that when, say we get a big snow, where they can go in there and plow and make sure that other parking spots are not taken? So, that's what many times happens, is that, you know, you get a big snowstorm, and before you know it, these guys, the contractors, start packing snow in areas, and they take out a whole bunch of parking spots.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Greenberg to come up, but somebody that the project has experienced in how that's handled.
Yeah, again, I'm just, I'm playing devil's advocate, trying to throw things at you.
So, I want to tell you about my world. When we have a big snow, we bring in big equipment, and we just pray they don't lift the car up and put it in a pile. It's a problem. There's, there's no scenario. And if we have a big snow where we're not impacting some spaces, there's nowhere to build an open field.
Well, I would assume that you're gonna have a building super that's gonna make sure that somebody doesn't come in and just starts haphazardly putting stuff and, you know, where they're causing problems.
Right. In all of our communities, we have a snow removal plan, especially on the parking decks, the Ascom across the street. We have a snow gate so we can dump it off the top of the roof.
Okay.
We don't have that situation here, but unfortunately, there's no way not to impact parking spaces, but we do have snow removal plans, so where they put it is to minimize the impact. But there, there's no question, there is an impact. But we've had people lift cars up before. It's just, you know, when you get those big snows, it's just bad.
Yeah. Great, that's it, Counselor. And team, excellent job.
Thank you.
I have a question. In reference to the Conformance with the Area Master Plan, this is very beautiful, by the way. We have looked at all your residential. It's very nice. Supposed to have residential, commercial, and employment. What are you doing in reference to, as it states here, page 56 of the master plan, states that on our economic development, they place a high emphasis on employment uses. Where is that?
So, the Melford Town Center is in the center of the overall Melford project. So, the overall Melford project is ringed with existing and/or approved employment, commercial uses. So, there's about 1.5 million square feet that's been approved, and part of the reason why the Melford Town Center was conceived was to find a way to activate to a greater extent that 1.5 million square feet, which had suffered from the term that we use as the suboptimal tenancy. You know, we have buildings that were 60% occupied, 50% occupied, and that's disastrous in many ways. So, the point was to create a center with a residential component, a retail component, which was a DSP that you'd seen, the Retail Village East, to start providing amenities and opportunities for people to live, shop, have a place to eat within one space. So, tonight, we're looking at just the retail portion of it, but the commercial component overall is basically all of Melford. And, you know, this is just the component meant to help activate and complement that previously designed, developed, and built portion of office, et cetera.
Would you say that Melford property will be a, hopefully, familiar describing it, and I hope this is your intention, a self-supporting community, meaning that business, retail, employment, instead of relying on outside sources to minimize traffic, accidents, and crime on the outside area affecting our community, that it will be self-supporting and that retail, business, residents can support each other without imposing too much hardship on the city of Bowie?
Yes.
That would be very nice if that could be done.
Agreed.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
My question is for staff. I just wanted to know, Mr. Minor, if you were in agreement with the request for the change on item eight?
Yes, staff is in agreement.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. There's no rhyme, no reason. I'm just spit them off, machine gun style. So, Mr. Tugberg, I guess probably this was more addressed to your expertise. You discussed the whole melding of community. So, how do you put, how do you foresee the mansions with the rest of the town center as a community? And then, a caveat or an additional question to that, how is Melford, how do you foresee Melford melding into the city of Bowie itself as a whole?
Rob, you may need to help me with that. But Melford Mansions itself is, you know, the whole community is planned around Melford Mansions, which you can see. Jennifer, can you point to the mansion itself, right in that large green? Right. And that happens to be on a mound, so the overall master plan of this community is based on the concept of wrapping around this. And I think wisely, the commercial area has been shifted to sort of east and south on this plan, putting the mansion in the center of the residential development, which I think is a great idea. And, and because it's on a hill, I mean, it's basically the landmark. As you're driving within this community, it's visible, or it's going to be visible, no matter what you build around it, because it's on an elevated mound. I'm more focused on the part that we were doing, which was sort of already divided and given to me, and I wanted to make sure, as I was saying, what was really important to me was to maintain that access, access cutting through the two plazas that is bifurcated by Curry Drive going into the community. For me, it was a visual association, and I think that you see every day, whether it's consciously or subconsciously, you are going to relate to it. And a lot of what I do is on a subconscious level. That's why I was talking about punch windows, brick usage, et cetera. We didn't want to copy it verbatim. We just wanted to inspire and sort of evoke that same imagery. I'm not sure if I'm answering your question, but, so...
These are touchy-feely questions, but these are questions that residents will bring up in some form or fashion.
I mean, I didn't do the overall plan, but, but I think it is wisely done. And, you know, Melford Mansion is the center of this community, so, Rob, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, if I could, you know, as terms of Melford as a whole, as part of the city of Bowie, you know, the way this has been conceived from day one, this has really been about finding ways to activate the employment side. So, I would, if I were to boil it down to a few words, I would say jobs, quality housing opportunities, protection of the environment. I think that gets overlooked at times, but Melford, the ownership, St. John Properties, gave over 100 acres of land next to the Patuxent River Basin as part of, part of their overall development scheme, and tax base. I think, you know, I don't know if it's understood, but St. John I think, you know, I don't know if it's understood, but St. John Properties, to my understanding, is the highest, pays the most taxes into the city of Bowie than any other property owner. As this project develops and each one of these buildings or the mansions portion, I mean, we're talking about assessed values of $100 million for one building, plus, plus, plus. So, the opportunity to, again, generate tax base is significant here. So, as terms of, you know, paying its, making a contribution to the city's fiscal health, I think that's significant. Opportunities to really activate the employment section of it, which was really the main emphasis for going to a mixed use, the potential there is great. We've already, and I'll speak for the company, we've already received interest from, you know, multiple tenants and people that normally wouldn't look at us, but they've heard about Melford, the Melford Town Center. And I think it's starting to work, even though we don't have a building out of the ground yet and we're praying that we can get one going as soon as possible. You know, if you build it, they will come. I really think this whole synergistic approach to employment, you know, instead of a single-use employment park, but multiple uses in one spot, to be as self-reliant as possible is really, is not a fad. It's the way to go. And I think the city of Bowie, this is gonna be a beacon within the city of Bowie of successful mixed use as soon as it can be implemented.
Yeah, so conceptually, I agree with you. But again, to kind of stand in for the residents, a prime example, maybe, Mr. Minor, you can help out with this answer, maybe not, but maybe Mr. Rao can step up. As far as, so, Melford is being annexed into the city proper?
It's already in the city.
Well, it's, okay, it's already in the city. So, that means the city, from a, you know, tax increase, tax base increase is wonderful, but then also with that comes the city has to provide services. So, how amenable is your development here for public works, trash pickup? So, and again, these are just broad examples, but like we were talking about, my colleague mentioned about the access to the actual mansions themselves are gonna be gated, correct?
Yes.
So, if you could go back to that slide, please, Mr. Jennifer? I'm trying to picture where exactly would be the ingress and egress route for this development here?
So, on the south side, between building six and A.
Okay.
That's an access point. Heading to the east, there's another access point. You head up that boulevard, you can see all the way at the top, there's an access road all the way to the north, coming across. Obviously, you can have internal access points from there. And then you have onto Curry Drive, an access point right there. So, there is actually quite good circulation around. As for deliveries, trash trucks, all that access will be provided, you know, either through codes or their own ability to get access to it, but that's part of the function of it. Those will be private services, not provided, you know, the city won't do trash pickup here. That'll be done by private enterprise.
Okay. So, say that again? I'm sorry, one more time. So, private enterprise will be responsible for trash pickup of this community?
I personally don't know how it's done in building. I believe it, particularly for a multifamily building, that it's done, you know, through contract.
Right, yeah, just asking a question, okay. Interesting, all right. So, is that burden then transferred to the residents of the community, the cost burden?
It's built into the cost of, you know, the operating cost for the facility such as.
Okay. Thank you. Let me go down my list.
Okay.
On the lighter side, speaking of the environment, I have been told that the pond over there at Melford has great fishing.
I believe it is stoned. There used to be a fishing contest the Sheriff's Department used to do there. I'm not sure if that's still ongoing, but yeah, that's right.
Oh, but by the way, I live right down the road from there, you know, so I go through there all the time. I mean, it's part of my routine biking. I do notice going, okay, when you go in, go through the road on the left, go all the way down, they're building, I think it's some of these units already, aren't they? Two of them?
I'm sorry, when, at what point?
When you go in the entrance and you take the road left instead of going right. You know where the doctor's units are?
Yes, yes, yes.
Beyond there?
Yes.
Are they building two residential units here now?
That is a Marriott Hotel franchise, so there's one Marriott Hotel and there's two others that were approved as part of it.
They look like condos or apartments to me, all these in there, no?
It's a full-service hotel.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, it's very nice. I encourage you to stop inside. The finishes are pretty cool.
I've been at the new hotel that's open. That's very nice.
Yes, yes.
Okay, just curious.
And there is a senior living, I think you've seen that too, the detailed site plan for the Tribute at Melford or the Thrive Senior Living Group. That's an amazing building as well, and they're moving towards hopefully a grand opening in the next month or so. And you may see their presence and their branding around the city, trying to get residents, but that'll be an assisted living facility, 140-bed facility.
Can you help out again with the walkability of the community? The bike trails, I guess this may go into the landscaping, the landscape plan, this probably detailed landscape plan. Integration of the walkability so it's not a multimodal-type environment. And what I mean by that is that, will you have to get in a vehicle to travel throughout the town center? Or is it walkable?
It's incredibly walkable. It's incredibly walkable. It's through a system of sidewalks, wide sidewalks, through walking trails, through construction of master plan trails all the way to the east for recreation. You know, the street network in and of itself has been designed to allow for bus access to make the certain turning radius necessary to navigate the streets for mass transit when that comes online. In terms of bicycle, Mr. Galado, you mentioned you bicycle in there. When the road network comes to fruition, there will be the opportunities for what we call sharos, which are, you know, it's designed for bikes and cars to share the road together. So, multimodal is absolutely the goal of this. You know, one of the benefits is the opportunity to take trips off the road, off the, you know, the regional road network. And by having something like this all in one place, that provides that opportunity. You know, we're not saying that'll be for every trip, but it provides the opportunity and, you know, we look forward for that successful multimodal integration.
Any further questions for either staff or the applicant? Okay, I'm open for a motion. Someone please help me out? Yeah?
I'll do it.
Mr. Chair, I would motion to approve detailed site plan 19-03 with conditions as modified on item number eight on page 18.
Do I have a second?
It's seconded.
Okay, so we have a motion passed by Mr. Scholes for approval of detailed site plan. Let's get the numbers mixed up.
It doesn't have a number yet.
Okay, yeah, it doesn't have a number yet. So, the detailed site plan for Melford Mansions at Melford Town Center has been seconded.
Docet 19-03, Mr. Chair.
Roger, thank you. With the understanding that staff recommendation number eight has been reviewed and agreed upon by both parties to strike the, make sure I understand this correctly, you want to revise that so that the storm warning management concept plan will be further discussed in further detail during the final technical plan review? But at this particular time, you want to strike the statement of materials shall include varieties of ornamental grasses and perennials? Is that correct?
No, actually, no.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, please, yes. I want to make sure I get the motion correct.
I apologize for, I didn't say that correctly. So, the portion that says stormwater management concept plan, if that could just be deleted and replaced with final technical stormwater plan.
Right.
And all the other considerations are absolutely appropriate, but at that time.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions or discussion? Verbal vote?
Aye.
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 Approved four to zero. Thank you very much, gentlemen and lady.
One more left. We've got one more. We've got one more.
We have minutes?
No, 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 no.
We have minutes?
Continue with the agenda. One agenda, item D, oh, excuse me, letter D, which is really detailed site plan. We're gonna go through this process again for the infrastructure. Should be a little shorter though, I believe. Correct, Mr. Minor?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Minor. You have it.
This item, we can do very briefly. It is only a detailed site plan for infrastructure for a future multifamily residential building. The site is about 5.54 acres. It would be located just to the east of the section that you just reviewed for the Melford Mansions. This slide shows in the box where that future building site is located. And I believe Mr. Antonetti had made reference to a drawing that looked like this earlier. This is the building footprint that's associated with the multifamily building, which is known as the Berkeley, which will be constructed at a future time. This detailed site plan this evening is only for infrastructure, meaning the utilities and the grading associated with setting up this building pad site. We've reviewed a few of these in the past through the city council. There's usually not much to comment on because we're not looking at a building, we're not looking at a parking lot or anything like that. We're really just looking for consistency with the land use as it pertains to the conceptual site plan. And we find that this proposed site is being set up as intended for multifamily development and as such, it is consistent with the prior review of the council on the preliminary plan of subdivision with respect to the grading of the area. And there are no issues related at this time. So, staff is simply recommending approval of the detailed site plan for the Berkeley multifamily infrastructure detailed site plan. And that concludes the staff presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Minor. Applicant, councilor, you have a few words to speak on?
Very few. Again, Robert Antonetti of the Law Firm of Ship Lane Horn. On behalf of the applicant, we agree with the staff recommendation. And again, this is just for infrastructure, but, you know, out of the economy of effort and scale, if we're mobilizing to do the grading and work on the mansion site, this is an opportune time to do some of the rough grading and utility infrastructure installation for the future Berkeley building. We look forward to coming back with that building when the conditions are right for that through a future detailed site plan. So, thank you for your consideration and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Will this have any kind of impact upon the previously built sections of Melford? I guess right now it won't, before, I mean, before the building is built, it won't, but as far as, is it the plan to have all the infrastructure tied in together for each various section of Melford Town Center?
So, this being the park...
Or they're gonna be on their own autonomous systems?
Right. So, in terms of the phasing, this would be the farthest, most eastern portion of the northeast neighborhood as designed in the conceptual site plan. So, it is not a necessary component for the circulation pattern, but once it comes online, it would certainly be complementary and fit right into that pattern as contemplated.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Floor is open for a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the detailed site plan for infrastructure for the...
It's not numbered yet.
Oh, it's not numbered yet?
No.
So, it's just a detailed site plan for infrastructure. So, I move that we... What was that?
Docet number 1904.
Oh, docet number 1904.
All right, I have a motion of approval of the detailed site plan for the infrastructure of multifamily residential project at Melford Town Center. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chair, I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Avery and seconded by Mr. Scholes. Questions and/or discussion? Verbal vote, please.
Aye.
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 Approval granted four to zero. Thank you very much, team. Moving on, the last item on the agendas for approval of a minutes from May 28, 2019, they were included in your packet. Hopefully, you've had the opportunity to read them, adding additions, deletions, corrections. Okay, I'm open for a motion of approval of the minutes as submitted.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. From the May 28, I'm sorry, 2019, advisor and planning board minutes.
Okay, Roger, we have a motion of approval of the minutes as written from May 28. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Galado. Verbal vote?
Aye.
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 Approval of a minute says submitted, Mr. Minor, from May 28. At this time, I am open for a motion for adjournment.
I look at 60 minutes.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn as by Ms. Avery. Second?
Seconded.
All right, seconded, so move. Adjournment, Mr. Minor, is, looks like 54 the hour, 8:54. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, lovely resident, for showing up. Can you approach, can you approach the mic and state your name and address for the record?